Welcome everyone, let's go ahead and get started. Paul did not get you in. Sorry Kitty's having computer problems up here tonight. Uh, welcome everyone, we enjoyed our dinner meeting, uh, and, um, having some special guests there was, uh, a little different. We'll, we'll progress with that. Jeremy, would you like to give our invocation?
Sure. Good evening everyone, and let's pause for just a moment. God as we meet this evening, we ask for your spirit to be at work in our midst. You might stir in us the gifts that we need to lead Erlanger with integrity and focus to the task at hand. Help us to be mindful of those who we work alongside of, our employees, vendors, our local community, all those whose livelihood is connected to this hospital. Help us to trust in your guidance and look toward the long-term goals of all whom we serve. Finally, we thank you for your presence and your care that gives us the encouragement and support, for family and friends, for help and strength, for love and joy. We thank you and pray that we may use these gifts as to increase the happiness of all those around us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Dr. Blake, you have a presentation on quality?
Tonight I'm gonna report on our second annual Patient Safety and Quality Improvement Day. As you know, part of what we do is teach residents how to identify quality and safety issues that need to be improved and, and teach them a little bit of the science behind that and methodology based on institute healthcare improvement model of, of the process to go through to make those changes that end up in improvement, hopefully. Uh, this year we had 15 different presenters and, uh, tonight I'm gonna show you the, just briefly, the four top projects that were reported and, um, a little bit about them. The first one I'm gonna talk about comes from Erlanger East, uh, the nursing department out there actually, and, um, this was a problem with the children that come out there. Uh, the equipment, supplies, uh, a number of things, uh, that we do with these children are all based on how tall they are. And we weren't consistently measuring their height, uh, and that wasn't consistently getting the chart. The weight was, but the height wasn't. And it just happened that, um, this was at a time when, uh, a lady by the name of Gail Hinton, um, if you haven't met her, at least you've seen her artwork in Children's Hospital, the murals on all the walls, little ants on there. Um, she's a tremendously talented lady and she was painting the triage room for children out at East. And, um, they started thinking, they said, "Well, let's see if we can, um, combine those two things." And what, um, they came, came up with, if I can find a pointer in here somewhere, um, is if, if you notice, there are little figures at different heights. There's a little snail, a butterfly up there, and a bird, and the other. So, if, um, the patient would stand up against the wall and if they were at a butterfly height, they got a little yellow bracelet and the nurses would know to go to the yellow bin to get their gown that would fit them, or the supplies that they needed. So, it was a pretty clever little solution to that problem, I think, and, uh, it's worked very well. So, uh, kudos to Aline Schrum, who's the nurse manager out there, and to Gail Hinton for putting this together. The next one is a project, uh, from Jessica Thomas, who is, um, third-year resident in the Family Medicine Program, and, um, she noticed that tobacco users were not consistently being counseled around cessation, uh, according to the documentation that was in the chart. So, in medicine, we know that if it's not documented, it didn't happen. So, it's unclear whether they weren't getting the counseling so undocumented, or they were getting the counseling and it wasn't documented. So, she went through our process, which is to, uh, plan the project, make some changes, kinda study that, and then come up with either implementing those changes or making other, tweak it a little bit, and these go through these cycles. And she, uh, happened upon an idea in that process to put little sticky notes in a certain part of the chart that reminded the physicians to, um, not only do the counseling, but, uh, to document appropriately when they did it. So, uh, that counseling and documentation improved dramatically when she put that small little change into place, and that's what this is all about. Uh, the next one is, uh, Dr. Nian, who's a third-year resident in the Department of Pediatrics, and, uh, she was concerned that her patients who had eczema, which is a kind of a chronic, um, skin condition, and it's not that uncommon in children, uh, that their parents were not comfortable at all with taking care of that, and, uh, subsequently the children didn't get the kind of care they should've gotten. So, she put into play, um, an eczema action plan that not only standardized the way the residents, uh, instruct parents while they're in the clinic, but also made this handout for them to take home that had pictures of different kinds of creams and solutions and stuff, um, that they could use at home. And in follow-up, the parents, uh, felt much, much more comfortable with their care and there were a lot fewer problems, uh, with these children that had, um, eczema problems. That was the second-place winner, and, um, the top prize went to Timothy Stevens, who's a second-year surgery resident, and, uh, we know that miscommunication contributes, if not the, the most important contributor, it certainly is in the top five, uh, miscommunication contributes to, uh, errors in the care of patients that leads to mishaps and harm sometime. So, he, uh, developed this tool that surgery residents would use, um, the acronym he used was Scalpel, which is kinda clever, and each, uh, letter in there, uh, stood for another piece of information that each resident was supposed to pass on. And, uh, as they audited that communication, uh, that improved significantly, uh, tremendously actually, uh, so it improved the communication among residents and in sa- in the safety of the surgery resident, uh, the patients they were taking care of. So, those were the top four projects, uh, these are the presenters, and, um, I had planned to have them here tonight, but, um, this is Dr. Thomas, who talked about smoking cessation. She's on call tonight. Uh, this is Dr. Nian, who talked about eczema. She's took her winnings and went out of town. And, uh, this is Dr. Stevens, who, uh, talked about communication among residents, and, um, he, uh, went to a fancier place because he got a bigger prize, I guess, so there out of town. But, um, that doesn't mean we can't recognize the fine work they did and, uh, give them a hand. Um, I have, um, this notebook has all 15 of the projects in there, and, uh, I'm gonna give it to Kitty, like we did last year, and she'll put it up in the boardroom, so, uh, if you have time and, and wanna take a look at that, then, uh, it'll, they'll be up there for you to look at. Any questions about any of that? Okay. That's our resident presentations for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Blake. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes that were emailed out to us all? If I can get a motion to accept those? And second? All in favor? Thank you. All right, we're gonna go through the committees here. Um, I know Budget and Finance Committee met yesterday, a joint conference. Dr. Miller?
Um, no reports.
Your meeting?
No reports.
Okay. Um, Planning Committee?
We did not meet.
Audit Compliance, we did not meet. I don't believe Legal has met, um, or Management Board Evaluation, or Personnel. All right, we'll go to our, um, first resolution. Greg?
Here to present two resolutions this evening, and the first is concerning the administration and then the trustee, the administration of our 403B Plan, and then the trustee of the defined benefit plan or our traditional pension plan. First, I'd like to explain the process we've gone through. We reached out to the marketplace with an RFP because we have been with MetLife and also SunTrust as the trustee of our pension plan for a number of years. Not that they haven't been doing a good job, but we believe that we needed the test to market, and the information that we received, the responses that we received, said that it was, that it was good timing, the test to market, because we're gonna be able to reduce our expenses and increase the features of the plan and the defined contribution or savings plans for our employees. We had 12 responses on the defined contribution and the trustee, uh, business, and of those 12 responses, we narrowed it down to two finalists, and those two finalists were Milliman and Prudential. And as we interviewed those two organizations, we chose Prudential, and we chose Prudential for several reasons. One is Prudential had the best features, the best comprehensive approach, the most integrated approach, so it would be convenient for our employees as they were doing retirement planning, as far as the website and the consolidation of information, and two, from a cost basis, they were most cost-effective for the organization, and also for, from an employee perspective on the defined contribution fees. So, we chose Prudential for both DC Administrator and also the trustee of the defined benefit plan. Uh, the, uh, there were some questions regarding the expenses, what we're currently paying today at the Budget and Finance versus how much we'll be paying as we're going forward. Currently, between the defined contribution and the trustee expenses for the pension plan, we are paying, uh, a number that approaches $400,000, slightly less than $400,000. As we transition to Prudential, that $400,000 will be reduced to about $210,000, and we are pleased that we're able to reduce those expenses by about 40, 45 percent. And again, that shows up from a direct corporate expense or a direct expense to Erlanger Health System from a trustee perspective, and then as far as the fees on the defined contribution savings plan perspective, that assists employees so that they can earn more over the course of their investment life and then in their retirement savings. Additionally, there was a question raised, uh, Henry raised a question about conflict of interest around the trustee and the custodian being the same, and Prudential did, uh, submit a wrap fee for both trustee and custodian, but Henry and I, over the last 24 hours, uh, more today than anything else, uh, worked together. I reached out to the lawyer, I reached out and was able to speak with the Chief Trustee Officer of Prudential, and actually, the trustee is defined, I was using the terminology trustee, but it's, it's actually a directed trustee that has limited authorities over a full trustee. Additionally, uh, Prudential has a bank, uh, they actually are Prudential Bank and Trust. They're regulated by the banking industry, just as any other, uh, the bank is, and as you know, banks are quite regulated, and they actually outsource the custodial part of the business. So, the, the concern was the trustee and the custodian being one in the same organization. Well, actually, as you delayer the, the, the process that it will actually be used or the, the platform that will be put in place, trustee will be Prudential and the custodian, and they will outsource for our pension plan to BNY Mellon. So, the concern regarding the conflict of interest is actually taken care of, you may say, and that was discovered after kinda delayering of what the landscape may look like. Again, Prudential bundled the trustee and the, the custodial fees, and they said more often than not, plans with less than a billion dollars of investments, the trustee and the custodian are bundled. Plans that exceed a billion dollars, uh, they start to review and look at, might they have a totally different trustee and a custodian, it's not a wrapped fee. The retirement concept at Erlanger, just, uh, I'd like to, to point out, it is one of the best plans in the region, and, and really one of the best plans in, in, if I, if I look throughout healthcare, because it's, it, we do have a 3% base contribution, up to 2% matching, and then an additional 2.5% for those employees as we transition from the traditional pension plan, we froze it, to a fully defined contribution or savings plan and an additional 2.5%. So, for someone, the, the veteran employees that were a participant in the traditional pension plan, they can receive up to 7.5% in the defined contribution plan or the savings plan. So, we feel very good about that. All other employees could receive up to 5%. And as we make this transition, the employee benefit, the dollars that are contributed by Erlanger on behalf of employees to the retirement concept is not changing. The benefit remains the same. This is just the plan administrator, and, again, the plan administrator moving from MetLife to Prudential from a savings plan perspective, and on the trustee piece, the defined trustee moving from SunTrust to Prudential. Be glad to address any questions you have at this time.
Yeah. Um, I, I don't know that I've fully understood. Could you, can you recap just quickly the, the major differences between SunTrust and Prudential? You talked about, uh, trustee, custodianship being bundled. Was SunTrust not doing that?
Uh, SunTrust was, it was bundled. Yes, sir. It, it was.
Okay, well, what were the major differences? Because, uh, when I see this, SunTrust is a, is a local company, had been, uh, had this business for a long, long time. There had to be some careful thought and consideration given to move into a company that's basically out of town and we had lost use of that service from then before. What were the one, two, three differences?
So, a, a couple of things. Uh, trustee, SunTrust has been the trustee for years and years, and, uh, the, they, about five or six years ago, five, six, seven years ago, they actually moved, uh, the trust department, we were dealing with someone local, they moved it to Atlanta. So, we've been working with an Atlanta office instead of a Chattanooga office for five, six, seven years. So, one, they were already positioned out of town from a trust perspective. Two is when we did the evaluation, Prudential, uh, it came in at $25,000, the SunTrust was $95,000. So, if you look at from a percent perspective, 95 to 25, a significant difference. Other comments, questions?
I've got a quick question. I called in last night, but I missed the part where you said about the, um, the company match. Tell me again what the...
So, the company match, we're changing administrators, the, the benefit to the employees is not changing. We have a 3% base contribution, so, in the savings plan, so regardless, if an employee contributes, they are provided three, a 3% base contribution, uh, on their behalf. Additionally, we have a matching concept, 50 cents on the dollar, so if an employee will put in 4%, they will receive an additional 2% of, of company contribution.
So, what's the total possible?
So, 5%.
5%.
And then for those employees that, um, reach the, uh, rule of, what we term the rule of 75.
Right.
If you were in the pension plan, if you're hired prior to July 109, and your service plus age greater than or equal to 75, then you can also receive an additional 2.5% for five years. And we did that as a transitional benefit when we froze the pension plan, and so that, I think, is five or six or 700 employees receiving the additional 2.5%.
So, that takes you to 7.5%.
7.5%.
Okay.
Which if, if you think about it, through, kinda, throughout corporate America, definitely in healthcare, 7.5%.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the top tier as far as company contributions to a savings plan.
Yep. Okay.
And, but, none of this affects the plan. This is just on the administration. Right now, the main provider is MetLife, and MetLife core business is not this. We're gonna go to Prudential, and the, the computer access for the employees is gonna be greatly improved.
Prudential has about 356 billion in retirement assets under management, 16.1 is in healthcare, 250,000 healthcare participants, so they know healthcare, and obviously, as Kevin was saying, they are very embedded in, in managing retirement programs.
Any other questions? All right, could I have a motion to approve Resolution 150509?
Seven.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Henry. All in favor? All right. Opposed? I don't, I think I got all eyes there. All right. All right, Greg, you're up for 150510.
This resolution is to fund the pension plan for fiscal year 15 and also for fiscal year 16. We are asking for the board to approve a million-dollar contribution to the pension plan in fiscal year 15, and then a $2 million contribution to the pension plan in fiscal year 16. And you may be asking, "Well, why aren't we contributing to the pension plan? Didn't we freeze the pension plan?" We did freeze the pension plan July 1, you know, around July 1 of 2014. But, the mathematics behind the pension plan, because they're paying out not only this year, but for many years to come, uh, the mathematics behind those plans, and as you look at it from an actuary perspective, the funding will continue even though we froze the plan. We have a 20-year amortization schedule built into the plan, and so if you look out over the course of, of 20 years, is how we would view funding the plan, and management is making a recommendation that we should fund a million dollars in fiscal year 15, $2 million in fiscal year 16. And then we will be coming back to you for future fund, the funding level in future years. So, I would ask that, uh, you, you approve that resolution this evening. I might add one point, if I may. This is not the only dollars contributed on behalf of employees to retirement plan, just as we were speaking of the savings plan. Erlanger, over the course of two years, will contribute to the savings plan $16 million. So, these dollars are above and beyond the contributions that Erlanger is making to the savings plan, again, on behalf of employees. So, Erlanger will contribute $16 million over the course of fiscal year 15 and fiscal year 16 to the retirement savings plan for our employees. And then we're also requesting this million dollars and $2 million go into the traditional pension plan.
Is the pension plan fully funded?
Uh, the pension plan is not fully funded. Uh, we are, we obviously stay in touch with the actuary and the level of funding, and most pension plans are not fully funded, but we are, the actuary is comfortable at our level of funding, and from a pub, a public pension plan, we are well ahead of most public pension plans. So, we're, we're funded at a level that is not concerning to the actuary.
And there was discussion last night about if interest rates go up, that will really correct itself. Did I get here that?
Yes, you, you did. Our, obviously pension plans are, and our plan is especially sensitive to interest rates, and as interest rates increase, I guess there is a, a additional bottom we could find, I, I don't know where it may be, but, uh, so interest rates are more than likely gonna creep up over the course of time, definitely within those 20 years, and as the interest rate increases, again, the way the mathematics works within the pension plan, it would be favorable to the funding level, and, and also what alternatives, you know, Erlanger may have as far as the pension plan is concerned.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion to approve Resolution 150510?
Seven.
Anita? And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gerald. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay, that's approved.
Thank you.
Uh, now we have Tish Ingles with Resolution 150511.
Trustees, this is a resolution that authorizes the purchase of the Epic EMR software and implementation and hosting services. Erlanger is currently best-of-breed state, and we want to advance our IT system here. So, we desire to create an integrated and a collaborated, patient-centered environment with an up-to-date information technology system. This is part of our strategy to advance Erlanger overall, so we can, we'll do a consistent enterprise-wide source of patient information that will improve the patient's safety and alleviating duplications across the board. We will be purchasing this, if, if rewarded, to the Epic software and Epic Hosting Services and the Epic Corporation. Our strategy is to deploy this Epic Enterprise Integrated Electronic Medical Record that supports a unified, unified, single database across the platform. Whereas the funding for this, it will be a combination of operating cost of $97.3 million and a capital cost of $91 point, over the, the expenses will be spread over a 10-year period. And, we went through a lot of due diligence to get here, I've done a lot of, um, committees, and we had a steer, and it was approved 100% by our clinicians across the board. We also had the opportunity to do a public educational session on this, and we seek approval to move forward with, uh, contracting with Epic for ourselves. Is there any questions?
I think everyone's, has everyone had a chance to participate in a session as far as, um...
I think, I think we've had a chance. I don't know if we all did.
Yeah, we did multiple sessions.
There were several, there were several opportunities, um, there were several meetings that were held, both with the board and the physician IT Steering Committee that met several times. Um, I wanna personally thank all the physicians who served on the IT Steering Committee. They made site visits, um, they looked at the opportunities out there, um, they went online and looked at both systems, they inquired with their colleagues at other facilities about other systems. Epic is the number-one reputation in the market, um, although our physicians were, um, wanting the best system in the country, Brett Taber and myself were a little concerned what were the financials associated that. After the bids were released, Epic was not only the best system out there, but it was the most cost-effective, um, system for this hospital, and Brett, myself, the entire medical staff, um, I think we did an actual vote of the medical staff, and it was...
It was 100%.
Well, 98% initially, and when the two people who voted no, we asked them and they said, "Oh, we just want you to make a change from what we have now." We didn't really care the difference between Epic and Cerner. Um, it was an unbelievable support from our medical staff, the involvement, the several meetings, from our strategic planning meeting, the first time when we introduced this concept, to meetings that were available to the board with our medical staff, the amount of work that led up to this point, and Trish really brought us to the dance floor with Epic and the legal team to get the contract in place. So, there's a lot of people that brought us to where we are right now. This is probably the most significant investment. There's no short-term gains here, it's just a lot of big investments over the next, um, 10 years, mostly in the first three years, but what we're doing here is we're laying the foundation for our future. And we really can't take this hospital and enhance quality, patient safety, and patient care to the next level without significantly investing in the IT infrastructure.
All right. Okay.
If I could ask again, and you've explained this, I'm just still not completely clear on it, but this is, will be a hundred million dollars over 10 years, but if we didn't make any changes, if we stayed with what we are, what would be the yearly cost on that?
It increases. We will keep going up because the maintenance of what we currently have, it is a drain.
And it's how much per year?
We marched it out in the public educational piece, and when we got down to that 10-year mark, we were very, very close if we didn't do anything. So, we know though, as we think about things, how we have to maintain them, they break, we have to take upgrades, we have to do all this maintenance, that's if we didn't do anything. We're gonna be at the same mark.
Our current spend today for the 10 years, as it is today, uh, is $131 million.
Yeah, so, so we've got a huge expense regardless.
Yeah, it's, but keep in mind too, as Tish said, that's based on the software as we have it today. We know based on our physician feedback, our commission feedback, our nurse feedback, that we, if we kept this old-style software, there's got to be significant addition on top of the... on top of this. And then at that point, it's not supported since Siemens sold it to Cerner. So truly, and then to operate Cerner, or to Epic going forward for the next 10 years, with all the things that the doctors, the nurses, the upgrades, all those added features, the secured email, all that, it's $130 million. So we're getting a top-notch system from an operating standpoint. Because you've got to look at the total operating ownership costs, not just the initial purchase. That we're getting this very, very high-end system that it's very physician-nurse friendly at the same price as an old-school system that we would have to modify dramatically. So I would even suggest or even estimate that if we stayed with what we got, just to get it to even minimal level, you'd be spending another $20 to $50 million just to get it at that level that doctors and nurses can perform appropriately on.
The other thing that Tish was eloquent in describing is Erlanger, within this current budget, is going to be adding about another 100 FTEs that we're going to be using to implement a system both on the clinical and the IT side. So we can do that. And Epic is actually bringing about 100 people in the next year, year and a half, to do the implementation. So the whole economic impact will be significantly impacted by the implementation of this system.
And all these costs that we've mentioned are included in the 2016 budget that we presented Tuesday night as well. So this is not beyond what was presented at the Tuesday night Budget Finance Meeting.
So I think the point being, it's a better system, no doubt about that. But it's actually going to also be less costly.
Over the time, the first, and that's what I was saying, is the upfront costs are pretty significant over the 10 years.
Yeah, over 10 years.
Absolutely. And I've not figured into this, what I call the cost savings, or the soft savings of, you know, we should see increased productivity, nurse satisfaction, I mean, all those soft costs that you can't really put your arm around. So we've shown you what I view as, you know, not the worst case, but that conservative estimate. Because we do expect that once we get live, after we get through the bumps in the road, that we should see some efficiencies and more happier people using our system, and actually better quality outcomes as well. Right.
This is really a patient-centered, always, you know, this is about the clinicians and our patients here. This is about watching the patient go through our system. Right now, you have 20-plus systems that our patient has to travel through. That's a lot of work to do. And our clinicians, you know, our patients here in this community deserve that. They deserve an upgrade on our IT. Why not? Our clinicians are at the bedside trying to work with tools that are out of date. And we all know that, you know, no one likes to work with a tool that is so out of date that you can't do your job in an efficient way. So it really is a patient-centered thing. We can position this organization to be focused about our patients and have them be experiencing their medical health records in a way that they can see it and they can participate in their care.
And I assume this will eliminate the problem of patients having to register at multiple sites.
And duplicate, yeah. There's a lot of duplicate effort here because you are going from different systems. It alleviates a lot of that duplication. It also provides the advancements that a lot of organizations are moving forward, where you can provide a kiosk environment. You know, some of our patients, like my age range, I can walk up to a kiosk and I can sign in. Or you can give them a patient advocate there that can help them through that. But as technology advances, you have to stay on, you know, ahead of it or with the time. And if you don't, it becomes such a drain on your maintenance that you're just out of date.
And we have even, we have now in excess of over 200 interfaces between all the different... So you can imagine just the cost associated with maintaining those. As each individual module is upgraded, you have to test every interface to make sure. So those are those soft costs that I've not even included that. I think it's going to be, we're going to probably be smiling big time of those soft cost savings as well.
Yeah. This included 10 years of, you know, we get upgrades the ones we own the product. With our current state, we have to pay for each one of those applications when we upgrade. So that is one of those soft costs.
Trish, is any of this data storage in cloud, cloud storage?
Epic will be doing the hosting for it. So yes, our storage will be with Epic. They're hosting.
So they'll be doing this?
That's included in this, this services agreement. We have other storage that is independent of this, but all of these clinical apps revenue, everything that's in this enterprise solution will be hosted at Epic.
Right now, we store it with Siemens in Pennsylvania, and that would be migrating from Siemens to Epic.
Yeah, we've been hosted from Siemens since the 90s.
Right. We don't have, yeah.
So all of that would be transferred to Epic?
Yes. It's just, it's just more, I mean, these vendors, this is their core competency. And so they have the ability, you know, redundant systems, all of that, that is all built into that service agreement.
This is an enterprise solution. It's the entire enterprise clinical revenue.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All right. Could I ask for a motion to approve Resolution 150511?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Phil. Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's approved. Thank you, Tish.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Kern?
I have a report.
No report. All right.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. You know, what the board has just done is probably one of the most significant decisions probably in modern-day times, investing $100 million into Erlanger's future. You know, one of the things that we talked about is registering in two different systems. Remember, Dr. Shoemaker, when I first came here, was telling me that, you know, you come here, you register, and they're actually entering data into two different computers at the same time. And found out, it was just not in one area, it was in multiple areas of the hospital. And that continues. So we're really investing in the best IT infrastructure in this country right now. Judy Faulkner, who is the founder and CEO of Epic, came to Chattanooga, addressed the medical staff and other leadership at the hospital, and really talked about, not only about the history of Epic, but the future of IT in hospitals, and really started describing, and one of the things, what is the greatest fear and threat? And she talked about her ideas of vulnerability that the US has in cybersecurity, and probably the thing that keeps her up at night. But felt really comfortable about where we're going, had personal ability to review our implementation plan, and felt we were approaching it really well. But I really want to thank the board for this decision. And also, I will keep you up to date on our progress, because this is a journey, a very long journey that's going to take everybody to kind of move us to the next level. Yesterday, the State Department of Health approved our CON application for an interventional cardiology lab at Erlanger East. Boy, this is pretty significant. It really is Erlanger's commitment to making Erlanger East a full-service, comprehensive, community hospital. Dr. Chuck Campbell, Dr. Jan Keyes, Dr. Phil Jackson, and Joe Winnick actually presented the Department of Health yesterday, and it was a unanimous decision to support Erlanger expanding services at East in cardiac. I've been talking to you a little bit about the quality department, but embedded in the budget is a new quality department with new positions for leadership and an expansive role and integration, both on the medical staff side and the administration side, with new positions that are embedded in the new budget. So hopefully, you're going to have an opportunity to review that. But this is my commitment, that we are focusing on quality and have enhanced and developed a full-service department. I'm going to ask Robert Brooks to give us an update. He informed the medical staff, but we have a lot of projects that are ongoing right now, and that really talks about our expansion plan, so.
Thank you, Kevin. One of the things that we reported at the Finance Committee this week was the tremendous growth that we've seen here at Erlanger. And with growth comes some growing pains. And we've experienced that in not having enough beds available for our patients. And so there are several things that have been underway for a period of time, and many of those will be coming to fruition and opening. And so I just want to give a quick update. One of those is that we've been utilizing 10 beds in the Miller Eye Center for Surgery patients. And Miller Eye Surgery Center has had a capacity in there that has been there for quite some time. So we worked with the team there to be able to place post-surgical patients in that unit, pretty much Monday through Friday, when our surgery schedule is very, very busy. And so that added 10 beds. We're reopening 10 monitored beds at Erlanger North within the next few weeks in mid-June. As you know, several years ago, all of the beds at North were closed, and only the ambulatory services stayed open. So this will reopen and re-energize North as a community hospital in Red Bank. And Phil Jackson, the CEO out there at North, has been meeting with the mayors of both Red Bank and Hickson and all of the areas around there. And they're very excited that North is going to be reopening. It brings their community hospital back. So we're very excited about that. And we're opening six ICU beds, additional ICU beds on Two West, which was the old burn unit. So it'll be a MedSurg ICU. And those will actually be open, hopefully, in the next two weeks. And we were up there touring today, and the beds are here, and most of the renovations have been done. And we're just waiting on a couple monitors to get delivered and floors to be done, and those beds will be open. It's going to be managed by the MedSurg ICU nurse manager, and it'll open anytime that we need it. And if the patient census isn't there, which it probably will be all of the time because we've had a lot of additional ICU needs, then it can flex back down. And we will also be opening in December 12 additional beds on the sixth floor as part of the orthopedic outpatient center of excellence up there. And so right now, those patients are housed on the ninth floor amongst other ortho patients. So this will give 12 additional beds into the total capacity. And then in July, what was proposed in the budget was an additional 10 to 12 ICU beds to be added on to the MedSurg ICU in the third floor. So upon approval of the next year's budget, as long as that's in it, that would give us an additional 10 to 12 ICU beds as well. So all in all, we'll have 32 additional monitored beds here in this campus, well, 22 on this campus, 10 at North, and then 16 to 18 additional ICU beds, six immediately available in the next week. And then the other 10 to 12 would be immediately put into construction upon approval of the budget. And then also, as you all know, Erlanger East is undergoing their expansion, which the groundbreaking, you know, Kevin's going to talk about here in a moment, but that'll add an additional 60 MedSurg beds at the East campus, as well as multiple ORs, the interventional cath lab, additional labor and delivery rooms. So it's going to really transform East into a full-service community hospital. And these are all of our speeches.
Rob, thank you very much. The Erlanger East groundbreaking, if everybody could put it on your calendar, is June 22 at 11 o'clock. It's probably going to be the greatest ribbon cuttings that we've ever had, and we're really proud of the Erlanger East expansion project.
What time was that again?
11:00 AM on June 22.
And I'm from Ohio, so I don't know this guy that well. But Phil Fulmer, the previous coach of UT, is going to be our honorary guest there to help us do the ribbon cutting. His daughter actually gave birth there, and she raved about her experience so much that he wants to get involved in East and help us do that groundbreaking, so.
11?
Oh, that's big.
Excellent. The last point I wanted to bring to everybody's attention is the Physician IT Steering Committee is getting together again. We're now going to be talking about the implementation of a iPhone application called Zocdoc. And we're going to be first in our region to implementing, making physician appointments by using your iPhone, very similar to OpenTable, or very similar to, what's the cab company?
Uber.
Uber. But you can make your own doctor appointments using your iPhone. So this is really new technology. A lot of other major cities have done that, but Erlanger's going to be first to market with Zocdoc, and we're very proud of that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Only on Apple, not on Android?
Yeah, you can use either/or, and you can also, excuse me, you can also use your PC.
Okay, great.
That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any other, any other reports tonight? We will, do you have, we need to close the meeting. Do you have?
Yes.
We are going to close the meeting.
Oops. Turning down.
No laughing. I just have one other thing. That Thursday, June 18, in the board office, we are going to have a budget update for the medical staff, officers, and the board of directors, so we can have adequate discussion about the budget and ask the team any questions, so there's a better understanding before next month.
When is that?
It's June 18 at noon. You can either call in, or you can come and have lunch.
At noon?
At noon. Or if that time is not available, good for your schedule, you can call Brett's office, and Brett will arrange any time that is convenient for you to come in and go through and ask any questions regarding the budget.
Yeah, I think you've already sent out a meeting request on that, maybe.
Yeah, this has worked real good in the past, for if you have, you know, additional questions before, because we will be asking for your vote at the June board meeting. But this allows the...
Adequate discussion.
...more discussion or have questions. It works very well. In the past, it's been very helpful.
Where's that going to be?
In the board.
In the board office. Yeah. And you should have received an appointment.
Okay. We are going to close this meeting, and we need to go over our credentialing. And I'll ask for the trustees to remain. And it'll take just five minutes or so, but we've got to do that. And that has to be done in closed session. So our open meeting is adjourned.